We'll move along then to our regular agenda item. And our first item on the regular agenda is item 15, the Museum Square rezoning, Development Agreement and abandonment of, I'm sorry, abandonment, 13 ZN 2018, 10 DA 2018, and 1 AB 2019. Our presenter is Brian Clough, and our senior planner, please.
Good evening, Mayor Lane and council members. Thank you. And again, I am Brian Clough with the City of Scottsdale's current planning department. This is item number 15, Museum Square. There are several action items included under item 15, and I'll be giving a combined presentation for all of the items. The subject site we're looking at today is in the Old Town Scottsdale area on the Goldwater Curve here at Second Street and Marshall Way, identified in yellow. Here's a closer look at the subject site at Second and Marshall Way. For context, you can see the Scottsdale Artist School, the Stagebrush Theater here, and then to the north, the Scottsdale Museum of the West. And the majority of the subject site is currently owned by the city, with the exception of the highlighted yellow portion here, which is owned by the developer currently. And the applicant and the city have entered into a purchase and sale agreement for the remaining site area that is under city ownership. And a summary of the requests tonight include a Fourth Amendment to the Purchase and Sale Agreement that was originally entered into in February of 2008, and then the Development Plan with amended development standards for a zoning district map amendment from the city's Downtown Downtown Multiple Use Type 2 Plan Block Development Downtown Overlay and Downtown Office Commercial Type 2 Plan Block Development Downtown Overlay to the Downtown Downtown Multiple Use Type 3 Plan Block Development Downtown Overlay. Along with that is an associated development agreement, and it is part of a Plan Block Development Overlay application. Also, there is an associated right-of-way abandonment included with the request. So to start off, talking about the Fourth Amendment to the Purchase and Sale Agreement, this graphic here highlights the portions of the site that are under that Purchase and Sale Agreement, which includes the north parcel where the hotel would be located, and the south parcel where the three residential buildings are located. A quick summary of the changes proposed by the Fourth Amendment to the Purchase and Sale Agreement include terms for the purchaser to build between 151 and 168 public parking stalls under the hotel. The purchase price would be adjusted by approximately $7.1 million, which is equivalent to $45,000 a space for those spaces. Also terms for an interim parking solution, which would include 149 surface parking spaces, additional on-street stalls, and the purchase price to be adjusted based on termination of deed restrictions on the property. To summarize, with regard to the public parking, the parking structure, the city would pay to that through the reduction in the price, as I previously mentioned. That $7.2 million is an average of those 151 to 168 spaces. That purchase price would be adjusted for the actual spaces that were completed. And the terms of the construction would require the construction to begin within 10 years and completed within 12 years, although we would expect that to be completed earlier. And then the purchaser is committing for an additional 41 on-street parking spaces to be provided along the development front edges. And highlighting the adjustment of the purchase and sale price down by $1 million if the purchaser secures and records the termination of height deed restrictions that are affecting the parcels of the application. The $1 million reduction also reflects zoning and height density bonus and payment reduction, which in the original agreement was contemplated to be around $1.9 million, and it actually ended up only being about $900,000 based on the bonuses that are requested. And now getting into the zoning portion of the application, this is the existing zoning map showing the current designations on the property and the proposed zoning requested of the Downtown Downtown Multiple Use Type 2, or sorry, Type 3 with the Plan Block Development Overlay and Downtown Overlay. Here's the subject site relative to the Old Town Future Land Use Map, which does identify it as Downtown Multiple Use, and then the subject site relative to the Old Town Development Types Map, which identifies the site within the purple area, which is the Type 3 area. This is the proposed site plan for the Museum Square Development. And for context, the existing theater and artist school are shown, but they are not part of the application. The proposal includes the hotel building here on the north parcel with approximately 190 hotel rooms, and then three residential buildings in the south parcel, and a fourth residential building here. And then you can see also as part of the proposal is the Museum Square Plaza proposed in this area here, which will be a public open space plaza available for use by the public, and as well as the South Garden area and this portion of the site that will be open to the public. And overall, there is a lot of open space on the property, and all the required parking is provided in below-grade parking structures. This slide highlights the pedestrian circulation that will be, and the connectivity that will be achieved in the area with the proposed development. You can see there are connections through the public plaza area, which will reach up to Main Street here, and in addition, there will be a public pedestrian connection through the center of the project here, connecting Main Street all the way down to Goldwater. And there will be public access rights provided over this walkway, which will provide access to the South Garden area, and also a connection to a Goldwater Crossing here that would be a HAWK-style pedestrian crossing, for a signalized crossing for pedestrians. In addition, there would be a new signal proposed at the intersection of Second Street and Goldwater, and new sidewalks provided throughout the perimeter of the development. This slide identifies the required and proposed building setbacks for the development. The project is complying with all the required setbacks of the zoning districts and exceeding in some cases. Along the Goldwater Curve is a 30-foot required setback, and then interior to the project streets are 20-foot building setbacks required. This slide here is identifying the proposed building heights across the property. The tallest building is the hotel here at 150 feet. Next, down here, the middle residential building would be at 149 feet, and the other two residential buildings here step down to 135 and 139. You can also see through the different shades here how the building massing is stepping down towards the street along Goldwater for the perimeter of the development adjacent to the boundary of the Type 3. And then the residential building four here is at 75 feet in height. And the next few slides that I'll be going through are identifying some building sections through this site showing where the applicant is requesting amendments to the building step backs. So starting with the hotel building on Second Street, the dashed green line here indicates the standard step back requirement that would be required by the downtown zoning district, and then the solid green line shows the requested step back. And then you can see on the plan here, the pink area with the angle that the building is at, the pink area is the only area that's actually encroaching into that step back and needing to be amended. And then moving along to residential building one and residential building two on the Goldwater Curve, showing these two sections here, and showing that the building massing is meeting the step back without any amendment requested. And then a couple other locations here that are a similar condition is residential building one on Second Street, and residential building three on Goldwater is requesting the amendment here from the dashed line to the solid line. And again, looking in the plan view, the pink area is the only portion of the building that's actually encroaching into the step back. And then residential building three similarly on Marshall Way, and residential building four, which is complying with the standard step back requirements, given the 15-foot encroachment that is allowed. A quick summary of the project data, it is a proposed mixed-use development on a 7.34 gross acre site. The floor area ratio that would be allowed is 4.0 with bonuses. They're only proposing .52, and that would be for the hotel floor area. The building height allowed is 150 feet plus six feet of rooftop appurtenances with bonuses, and they are requesting to take full advantage of that 150 feet and the six feet for rooftop appurtenances. The density allowed is 50 dwelling units per acre, and they're proposing 47.2 with 346 units over the site. Parking required is 671 spaces. This is for the whole property, including the residential and the hotel, and there are 774 spaces provided. And parking has been a topic that's received a lot of attention lately, specifically related to the Museum Square development, as well as downtown in general. So city staff and the applicant and area business owners have worked closely together over the last 12 months studying parking in the area and working towards a plan that provides adequate private parking on-site, and also provides additional public parking that would be available in the area. This slide here kind of summarizes the proposed parking. This would be for the private parking only, and the numbers identified here are the number of spaces that are provided. So 178 spaces will be provided for the hotel on-site, which is 26 spaces beyond what the hotel is required based on the parking master plan that they submitted. And then the three residential buildings down here would be providing 430 spaces, which is 37 spaces more than what the code requires. And then residential building four, 166 private parking spaces, which is 40 spaces more than what the code requires. What we've heard from some of the area business owners is that most of the parking concerns are related to availability and efficiency of public parking in the area. What this slide is showing here are city-owned lots in the area where the city's committed to reconfiguring these lots to provide additional surface parking spaces. So starting with the Stagebrush Theater here, the city's committed to reconfigure that to provide an additional 34 parking spaces. The artist school lot can be reconfigured to provide an additional 10 public parking spaces. And then there is also discussion regarding a potential future capital project that may look into providing below-grade parking on the Stagebrush Theater site, which could result in additional 99 public parking spaces. In addition, as I mentioned, in discussion with the Purchase and Sale Agreement, is the developer will be providing 160 garage parking spaces in a below-grade level under the hotel. So with these changes, it would result in approximately 204 public parking spaces, and then the potential for 99 more than that if the city were to pursue the below-grade parking on the Stagebrush site. This slide here is identifying potential increases in the on-street parking. So the developer, through the development agreement and the zoning stipulations, has committed to providing an additional 41 on-street parking spaces beyond what's there currently. This slide highlighted in yellow here is identifying the areas where the developer will be doing that. The city has additionally committed to provide additional on-street parking stalls that would be part of a future capital project, and those specific areas haven't been yet identified, but they would be in the project area, and we would anticipate approximately 83 total on-street spaces could be provided beyond what's there currently. The next couple slides are going to be providing a before-and-after comparison for the public parking that would include on-site as well as on-street parking. So a quick summary here of the existing public parking, there's about 82 on-street spaces, 130 spaces in the Museum of the West, 127 surface spaces on the south parcel, south of Second Street, 56 spaces in the artist school lot, and 57 spaces on the Stagebrush Theater lot. And then after Museum Square Development, there would be approximately 165 on-street spaces, 130 spaces still in the Museum of the West, 160 spaces under the hotel, and 66 in the artist school, 91 in the Stagebrush Theater surface lot, which represents an increase of 160 spaces from existing conditions. And then there is, again, the potential for another 99 if the city pursued the underground option on Stagebrush. Now quickly, I'm going to summarize the Plan Block Development criteria as required by the Plan Block Development District. The first criteria is that the proposed development supports the land use elements of the general plan and the downtown plan. Those designations are mixed-use neighborhoods and downtown multiple use, so the proposed travel accommodations with restaurant and dwelling units in a mixed-use format is consistent with these land use elements. The second criteria is criteria for adding land uses. They are not proposing to add any land uses, so this criteria would not be applicable. And then the third criteria is that the proposed development reflects noteworthy investments to provide public benefits. So the bonus that they are requesting is 72 feet of building height to reach the 156 feet total, including mechanical appurtenances. So the formula that's set forth in the zoning ordinance calculates to an $885,000 bonus payment, which would be paid into the Downtown Special Improvement Trust Fund, and that money would be available for the city to use for future capital projects in the area. And quickly to touch on the proposed abandonment request, there is a sliver parcel on the north side of the south parcel, on the south side of Second Street, shown in yellow here. Here's a closer look at that. This is a remnant piece of right-of-way that was actually included in the Purchase and Sale Agreement, but since it is public right-of-way, it needs to go through the abandonment process. So that's why the abandonment case was submitted, and this is moving forward with the zoning case. And the compensation for the abandonment request has been included into the purchase price of the Purchase and Sale Agreement since that was previously contemplated. This case was, the zoning case was heard by the Development Review Board for recommendation on the development plan and amended development standards on September 20, 2018. They reviewed that against the DRB criteria and recommended approval 7-0. And then it was heard by the Planning Commission on September 11, and the Planning Commission reviewed that per their criteria, as well as looking at the amended development standards, and they recommended approval with a vote of 4 to 0. A summary of the public outreach here, there were two open houses held, July 12 of 2018 and February 16 of 2019. The applicant and the city also have sent several notices to the 750-foot radius as standard, as well as our newspaper ads and site postings, and then using the Internet subscriptions and social media. And we have received substantial amount of public comment throughout the process. Those have all been included in your city council report, and there's also been additional correspondence received since the report went out, so you should have received that on the dais for you today. And that does conclude staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here.
Very good. I appreciate it, Brian. And there probably will be some questions of staff, and we'll go ahead and hear from the submission, or the submitter. Mr. Berry, welcome.
Mayor members of the council, for your record, John Berry, 6750 Camelback Road in Scottsdale, and to quote a Beatles famous lyric, "It's been a long and winding road." But we are here now, and now is the time. Now is the time for the renaissance of the arts district, a once brilliant but now faded jewel in the city's crown. What's before you tonight is a once-in-a-generation opportunity, an opportunity born in collaboration, collaboration with residents from around the city, a collaboration with businesses, large and small, a collaboration with very diverse voices from around our community, an opportunity born in a vision and with a visionary. One of those visionaries is Rob McDonald. Rob is an individual who is committed to the renaissance of the arts district. Rob?
Thank you, John. I'm Rob McDonald. I'm the president of McDonald Communities, and we build communities. Mayor and council, this has been a long road, John, and I think we started in early 2017. It's always been a pleasure to work with you. So we appreciate your patience, those of you on council, for sticking with this. We thank you for your service and for being here tonight to deal with this matter. We've worked hard, and your staff has worked doubly hard. I'm going to limit my remarks to just thanking a few people. I want to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues and partners, Bill Borders and Dana Borrich, who are here. And we together thank our entire project team, all of whom are here tonight, all of whom I think are exceptional. I've been very proud to work with them. We want to thank your city staff. I think they're the best I've ever worked with in my 40-year career in this business. Your city manager, Jim Thompson, John was kind to say that I'm a visionary. I think that Jim Thompson is a real visionary. Your assistant city manager, Brent Stockwell, is tough. He's responsive, he's determined, he's a fair guy, but he's pretty tough. I admire him very, very much, and I thank him. Brian Clough, Randy Grant, Joe Padilla, Mike Hamblin, Dan Worth, Martha West, and Sherry Scott are all very talented people, and the City of Scottsdale is very fortunate to have these people. We've worked on a lot of projects that have gone on for years and years and never happened, and I think your team here was quite determined to try very hard to make this happen, if you should approve it this evening. I want to personally thank Officer Scott Coldenhaven and Officer Larry Scott for their exceptional kindness to me on my many, many trips to this building. They're fine gentlemen. So thank you to you all, and with that, I'm going to pass things off to our very talented architect, Mr. Jeff Denzack, who's going to speak more about the project. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Lane, council members. Again, I am Jeff Denzack. I am a partner and owner in the architectural firm Swabak, 7550 East McDonald Drive here I want to first draw your attention to the quote on the screen, "A master plan, community masterpiece," and that is a quote from Vern Swabak, who has put his heart and soul into this project. And one of the many things that Vern likes to remind us in the office that, as architects and designers, we're also artists, and we think it's so appropriate that we've been fortunate enough to work on this project here in the arts district, and as you know, we are so excited about the final product. Also important to note, I've been with the firm for just over 15 years, and I can tell you, this is the first time that all the partners have gotten involved in a single design of a project, and that is a commitment to Rob and Bill and Dana, but it's also our commitment to the City of Scottsdale, because we believe this project certainly raises the bar in terms of quality of design for the entire community moving forward. Brian has given you a little overview on the plan, and just one thing that I would like to add, when we first met with Rob and Bill and Dana, one of the very first things that they said to us is, "When you start to look at the plan, we want to make sure that you design it within the context of the Museum of the West, of the Stagebrush Theater, and of the Artist School." So for us, that was absolute music to our ears, because that showed us the sensitivity that Rob and his team have brought to the table. As you know, in the development plan, we've got a series of key themes throughout for the project, but one that I just wanted to point out that we've talked about, that's come up over and over, is this notion of an urban-integrated orchestrated community master plan, which we really think this is. And when we've said this during a number of our meetings and group sessions with the public, oftentimes we've had people come up to us and say, "Well, what's the big idea for Museum Square?" And for us, one of the things that we've tried to articulate, that it's not about one big idea, but for us, it's about doing 1,000 things really, really well, and again, that's a tribute to Vern and what he has taught us. And again, we think for this project, that has served us very, very well in terms of the overall design. So here's a view of what we're familiar with, and unfortunately, that is not very attractive. And here is what we would like to create. Here on the left is an example of the composition, in this case, the hotel, again, what we think is a beautiful design. And on the right, unfortunately, is what we see more and more throughout the valley is glass boxes that, in our minds, isn't really always contextual to the Sonoran Desert. We spent a lot of time coordinating with the Museum of the West. We love that facility and that design, and again, that's a credit to you. We've incorporated both current and historical elements in the proposed design. As you know from our discussions, we've incorporated brick, one of Vern's favorite quotes from Mr. Wright, "A brick is just a brick, but oh, the things that you can do with it." And again, that's going to be important moving forward to the design. Also, we've looked at it from a historical standpoint, really thinking about where this notion of the arts district and the art scene started in Scottsdale, and really, that goes back to Lloyd Kiva and Charles Laloma, and I think, as you know, Lloyd Kiva was Cherokee, and Charles Laloma was Hopi. And in Hopi, Laloma means beautiful glass, beautiful colors. So we have incorporated that artistic notion throughout our designs, and if you just peek up quickly to the ceiling, we can see a great example of how that's done. And then, of course, the notion that this project is transforming, we really think about it beyond its boundaries and think of the impact throughout the downtown. We spent a lot of time addressing the issue of height in an appropriate manner, thinking about appropriate open space, and again, to Rob and Bill's credit, looking at the development in terms of what we think fits, but not necessarily what all could be built. And then finally, this view is what we like to call the selfie view. Our hope is, in the middle of February, when we have visitors to the hotel and the plaza, really what I think of is a more of an urban park, that someone will take their iPhone, and they'll stand in front of that Museum Square sign and have that beautiful hotel behind them, and they'll take that shot, and they'll send it to their friends in Chicago when it's about minus 10 degrees, and they'll say, "Scottsdale, the Artist District, Museum Square, wish you were here." Thank you.
Mayor members of the council, they never applaud a lawyer. Rightfully so, by the way, rightfully so.
Actually, I didn't gavel down any of this.
Usually they applaud.
I think you may have noticed, I'm hearing a little bit of latitude right now.
Mayor members of the council.
You're not here for theater.
Well, we may be. We, mayor members of the council, I'm happy to answer any questions now, although I know you have a significant amount of public comment, I'm happy to wait until after public comment, if you prefer. if you prefer. Thank you.
All right, very good. We do have a number of requests to speak on the subject, and I've got over 20 cards. And I'm tempted to leave it at three minutes for each, but there is no particular need to use every second of it, if you're going to... Because even at 20, at three minutes, is an hour of testimony, so if you can get your point across quickly, that would be very much appreciated. I'd just soon avoid trying to cut the time if I could help it, so... And if you want to join your cards, I'll try and facilitate that, too, and if someone has a lengthier speech to give. But in any case, it is three minutes, I'll leave it at three minutes. And there are about 21 cards, as far as I got on the last count. And we'll start with Bill Crawford. And he'll be followed by Sandy Shenkett.
Greetings, mayor and council. My name is Bill Crawford, and I live in downtown Scottsdale, and I also have a business in downtown Scottsdale. Knock, knock. The future. A bright and vibrant future. The future of downtown Scottsdale. Are we going to open the door? I guess we're going to find out shortly. This project is exactly what the economists have been telling us for 20 years, that downtown Scottsdale needs. Ever since they built Carroll and Commons, Scottsdale Quarter, Desert Ridge, and we lost a lot of the vibrancy to those new shopping centers. We lost a lot of traffic, we lost a lot of shoppers, we lost interest. And so since then, downtown has been struggling, it's been challenging. They tell us that we need vibrancy, we need destiny, density, we need new people, and if we can replace that, we'll have a vibrant Scottsdale, not only for right now, but for the future. So this particular project, it gives everything to downtown Scottsdale and to the Arts District that we need desperately, not just for now, but for the future. So who would be against this? Can't think of anyone that would be against this. So the only reason that we might be against it might be for politics, but what I've seen in the last few days is a community coming together despite their differences, because this project is so awesome that you can't turn it down. This is the second time we've seen this recently. We see it happening right now with the Bonds. The whole city, from different sides, has come together to support the Bonds. And that's what I see with this project. The whole city has come together to support the Bonds. So one of the things that I would like to do is point out a quote from Winston Churchill, who said, "If we open a quarrel between the past and the present, we shall find out that we have lost the future." And so I'm so grateful to see that we've put our political differences aside, to look at the bigger picture of this great project. And I just have to go back in time a little bit, because one of the arguments that I heard early on was that the city should not release this, the city should hold on to this. And let's just look and see what happened the last time that the city had control of this project. It was the Laloma Bus Station. And I went there one day to buy tickets for my kids to ride on the bus, and I found out that they didn't take plastic. There's a handmade sign there that says, "Cash only." What? So I was so disappointed in that and so frustrated, and in my opinion, the city kind of squandered their opportunity with this property. And it sat empty for another 20 years. And now we have it, and it's ready to go. But look again at that cash-only sign, because it's a little bit prophetic. It says, "Cash only," which means to me that we have a developer that isn't going to be borrowing anything from the city. He's not looking for the city to finance this project, cash only. He's got his own money. So let's embrace this, let's open that door, and let's do what's right for the future of Scottsdale. Thank you so much.
Thanks. I will ask you, please, to refrain from applaud or booing, I don't know that anybody is going to be deserving that, but nevertheless, we try to maintain some decorum here. Yes, Shenkett, welcome.
My name is Sandy Shenkett, and my address is on file. And I'll cut this in half, since Bill was dramatic and said some of my words. So I'm just going to tell you that I supported this before the planning commission, September 11th. This article appeared in the August 11th edition, at which time I was quoted saying that this will stimulate the Arts District. And that's been my foremost interest in the community, is keeping the Arts District alive. And when Sandy Brunner told me that McDonald visited the Museum of the West a few years ago, and was so impressed that he told the Brunners that he desired to build a four- to five-star hotel and high-end condos to help improve the area and bring in more business to the Arts District and more patrons to the Museum of the West, I said, "This guy's God. He came to Scottsdale, he's going to make us come back." And I appreciate what you've all done, and I just encourage you to vote yes. It's a win-win for the developer and for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shenkett. Next is Mary Turner, followed by Jim Brunner.
Thank you, mayor, members of council. My name is Mary Turner, 5131 North Granite Reef Road. I know you've received a number of emails and support letters on behalf of Museum Square, and I would like to take a few minutes to read a few in record that couldn't attend today. The first one is from Honor Health. "As a large employer in the city of Scottsdale and a property owner in Old Town, Honor Health would like to add our support for the Museum Square Development Project. Our Osborne Medical Center campus is approximately 700 feet away from the proposal site, Museum Square. We recognize this project will bring much-needed activity to the current underutilized land parcel adjacent to the wonderful Museum of the West. Museum Square's proposed open space will be a major amenity for residents, visitors, and our employees alike. Ensuring the vibrancy of Scottsdale's downtown area with projects like Museum Square is an important part of keeping our city an attractive place for employees to live, work, and play. Maintaining a quality workforce is vital for Honor Health's continued success in bringing exceptional health care services to the city's residents and visitors. We urge you to support this important project." The second is from the Scottsdale Firefighters Association, President Sasha Weller. "Over the years, the city council has maintained a strong dedication to providing essential resources to its community and residents. We commend you for the actions you have taken to improve the city of Scottsdale. In order to meet the needs of the citizens for public safety, parks, roads, community programs, and quality of life measures, Scottsdale is widely considering the disposal of property. Thanks to the sale of unused land, approximately 27 million could be generated to help meet these challenges. We are excited for the potential Museum Square offers and commend the Scottsdale City Council for its inventive public-private approach. I encourage you to proceed with McDonald Development and Museum Square as a way to provide potential new revenues that will help support the needs of local programs, including those of public safety. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Next, Mr. Brunner. Should say, former councilman Brunner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. First, I'd like to commend all of you for having a moment of silence for our Deca Bitter, truly a loss for our community. My name is Jim Brunner. My address is on file with the city clerk. My wife and I have lived in Scottsdale for 50 years. And thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'd like to take maybe just a few minutes and talk about the history of arts in Scottsdale in general, and specifically the area called Museum Square Project. History of arts in Scottsdale began before there was a Scottsdale. The first art studio opened in 1909, with others following. The big push came after World War II, when a handful of talented artists opened studios in the Craftsman's Court area. Artists like Lloyd Kiva, Lou Davis, to mention just a few. Former First Lady Elna Roosevelt visited the Craftsman Center in 1946 and 1947. She wrote in her daily column about this, "Bringing national attention to Scottsdale as the arts, crafts, and fashion destination." Years later, when Scottsdale was incorporated, this was an integral part of this community. You've all heard me say many times that I think this culture is a part of Scottsdale's DNA from a very beginning. Move forward to the 1980s, when Scottsdale was reviewing the downtown plan, the role of the arts was acknowledged with special streetlight fixtures, signage, and improvements on the streets and sidewalks in the Arts District. I have some knowledge of the project, because I was on the city council during that timeframe. Unfortunately, to the best of my knowledge, not much in the way of significant capital, private or public, was invested in the intervening years to support the arts, until Scottsdale's Museum of the West was opened in 2015. This museum is a special public-private partnership between the city and the citizens who operate it. During the museum's first six months, six months, we had visitors from all 50 states and 13 countries. This diverse attendance continues to grow and brings people to downtown Scottsdale. Fast forward to today. Addition to the Museum Square development will significantly increase the traction of residents and visitors to this area. This will benefit existing art entities, Scottsdale Artist School, Stagebrush Theater, and the wonderful private galleries just one block north. And of course, the reason for this development and this location in the first place will benefit the Museum of the West. We at the museum welcome with open arms this Museum Square Project. One interesting note, all this history took place a short distance, mere blocks, from where Scottsdale's art tradition many years ago started. We have come full circle. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brunner. And next is Michael Fox, followed by Carter Unger.
Good evening, Honored Mayor and distinguished and dedicated city council members. I could make this really short by saying that this lovely, adorable, young elementary school child and her comment about the arts, and as well, our recognizing and celebrating the indigenous people, one of 22 tribes in our state, really summarizes, in my opinion, this whole project, in how indeed it is going to continue to support the arts and show such respect for our living cultures in varied ways. And it was very moving to me to hear this young child talk about her love for the arts, and of course, for us to recognize and celebrate the indigenous people of this region. But I can't help but think that the reason, really, that all of us are here tonight is because of the leadership of this body. When, on February 26th of 2013, you unanimously voted in support of both the management agreement as well as the design-build contract, to see that ultimately, by 2015, the museum was built, there would be, in my opinion, no vision and no commitment of Museum Square by its internationally highly respected and admired developer and his partners, along with the team of creative, sensitive, and thoughtful professionals assembled for his project, if our community had not supported the development of Western Spirit. And if we hadn't done, in these less than five years, what we have accomplished to gain the kind of reputation this institution deserves. I have been privileged, over my 50 years plus in my career in this management, to have directed nine different institutions, and to have had the privilege to see, in nearly every one of them, that we formed public and private partnerships that truly had given us opportunity to do things that very few other museums were afforded anywhere in this country. This is the epitome, in my opinion, of a public-private partnership that offers us as a community the opportunity to bring and celebrate the arts with the mercantile organizations of our neighborhood, certainly with the theater, Stagebrush and Grease Paint Theater, with our Artist School, and all the other resources that are going to add up to just an extraordinary collaboration of the arts and celebration of how people today learn from what it is in the arts that are presented them. We are totally committed at seeing that we integrate the arts in the life way of our visitors to the proposed Museum Square, where we will find such extraordinary ways to involve our community, and as we say often, the community of culture and arts, into the life way of our, both visitors to our community, whom will be staying in our neighborhood, as well as, of course, to the residents whom will be living there. Every day, with tourists lodging and residents living, we are really fortunate. So I just want to encourage that this wonderful body again supports unanimously the ordinance and the resolutions being presented to you this evening. Thank you very much.
Mr. Fox. Next is Carter Unger, who'll be followed by Don Henninger.
Mayor, council members, thank you for your service, and as Mr. McDonald noted, thank you for your patience. I think it's also worth noting tonight the amazing patience and dedication to this city that McDonald Development has had. There's obviously a lot of things to work through with any development, and I think we're really lucky to have a company of that caliber and with the dedication to stick through those ups and downs and changes. As many people will tell you, time is money, and an amazing company such as McDonald Development has a lot of opportunities to invest in a lot of places and put their time and effort into those projects. And I think we're all very lucky, as not only citizens, business owners, and future developers who aspire to create high-end projects that take care of a community and take care of creating a special sense of place. So besides the council deserving much gratitude for your patience, I also want to personally thank, as a citizen and business owner and future developer, Rob McDonald and his team for their patience and their commitment to high quality and high standards, that is, in keeping with what Scottsdale is. Please, vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Unger, thank you. Don Henninger, and followed by Lance Ross.
Thank you, Mayor Lane, members of council. My name is Don Henninger, 8202 East Del Camino Drive in Scottsdale, also with the Scottsdale Coalition of Today and Tomorrow. Museum Square, simply put, is a legacy project. It's one of the most dynamic projects to hit the city in a long time, and it's a key to reviving an area of Old Town that needs exactly that. Old Town has much charm and appeal still, but time's catching up. It needs more people, it needs more attractions, it needs new life. Museum Square provides all of this. It will bring people, local and visitors alike, many of them new customers, who will experience the charm of Old Town and all that its merchants have to offer. Ultimately, it will be an economic anchor for the city. It's one of the pieces of the puzzle that will give Old Town an exciting, sustainable future that will last for generations to come. Projects of this scope and magnitude don't come along very often, and they often come with challenges, and the developer has worked with the city and the private sector alike to come up with solutions, and we've heard about parking, what they've done to address that. They know that Scottsdale's special, and that it's deserving of world-class design, and they have responded, working with Swabak Architects, to create a design that is worthy of Scottsdale, and one that we can all be proud of. And it comes from a developer with a proven track record, one with the resources and the know-how to get the job done the right way. Projects like this don't come around very often. This is one the city really can't afford to pass up. It's one that can help ensure a strong future for our arts community and for our arts reputation, a foundation that can be a spark plug that connects the Museum of the West to the Civic Center and the Scottsdale Arts, and all the points in between. I urge you to approve this project, think of what you can do and leave for generations to come, and for building a new future for Old Town. We can start that today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henninger. Lance Ross. Lance Ross and Bob Pejman. And next.
Thank you, Mayor, council and city staff. It's a privilege for me to speak today. I'm Lance Ross. I live at 23804 North Church Road, Scottsdale. I'm on the Board of Directors for Grease Paint and the Stagebrush Theater and I speak in support of museum square. I'd like to share a few thoughts that I believe are true, having spent 40 years in the commercial real estate business and studying downtowns and communities and what makes things successful and what causes them to fail. Great cities are built by people for people. When planning a great city's downtown, it's important to foster the creation of a well-planned mixed district. And that center of that business district includes residential entertainment, including theaters, museums, retail, tourism, recreational, and government. The goal is putting all these different uses together to retain and attract residents, business, and people. Properly done, it creates vitality and sustainability. There are many examples of what makes a downtown viable and sustainable. The arts and cultural amenities are not only an important magnet, but they are an important fabric to how a community sees itself. The attractiveness of downtown is a combination of factors, a weaving of different uses together and a commitment by community leaders to hold on what defines us. The planned museum square is exciting and an opportunity to retain history while enhancing the neighborhood. As a stakeholder in the downtown for more than 50 years, Grease Paint and Stagebrush Theater are jewels that continue to the social and cultural fabric of the entire Scottsdale community. We see ourselves as part of a downtown allure, are excited to be part of the development and supportive of the museum square project. So we would like to thank the McDonald Company, Swaback Architects, the Museum of the West, the Scottsdale Artist School, the Scottsdale Artist Galleries, Scottsdale Leadership, the city staff, mayor, and all the members of council to get this right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Next is Mr. Bob Pejman. And Mr. Pejman has some dedicated time from Mr. French or Mr. French Thompson? Is four minutes going to be all right?
Absolutely, absolutely. Sounds good. Thank you, Mayor Lane, council members, Bob Pejman, owner of Pejman Gallery, addresses on the record. And I have to say that museum square is a first-class development and the developer, Rob McDonald, is a first-class developer and a visionary. Additionally, the architect Swaback is one of the leading architects in the valley and we're very happy that this team has come together to create this development. The galleries and the merchants from the beginning were for this development. They always saw it as something that can breathe new life into the Arts District. It would infuse energy, activate it. Our only reservation, as you all know, was parking and that was of no fault of the developer. It was a part of our deficient parking code. Having said that, we spent countless months with staff, with the developer, and at the end, the parking problem was solved. It was solved to our great satisfaction and I want to put, can we show this? Okay. I want to show this plan that Brian Clough went over, but I just want to go through it quickly. The four residential buildings, they required 519 spaces to code. Developer created or provided 596, that's 77 beyond the city code. The four-star hotel, it had some parking reduction, however, we put a stipulation in to provide dedicated spaces for 35 employees so that they would not park on the street and take merchant spaces. We're very happy about that. Additionally, the developer is creating 41 additional on-street parking spaces at his expense to provide additional parking space for the public. The new public parking facility that's under the hotel, it provides about 160 spaces that is priced at $45,000 a stall. This is far cheaper than the city building the same parking spaces somewhere else, by far cheaper. And also, there's no land cost. We're piggybacking on top of the land that's already there, so this is a win-win. There was some discussion that if the hotel was going to be delayed, so would these parking spaces and then again, we came up with this great solution of an interim parking space that while the hotel is delayed and if it's delayed, that the hotel site will be turned into 149 public parking space and that's going to be also done at the developer's expense. Additionally, the city is creating parking. Staff, I met with staff a few hours ago, they're committing to create an additional 57 parking spaces on Stagebrush, increasing it to a total of 120 shortly. And also, as part of a master plan for Second Street, they will include the creating of the additional on-street parking spaces by the Stagebrush and the Artist School and more. So we're very thankful. We're very thankful that all this is being done. It creates the public parking for the area because this kind of development will bring a lot more people into the area. It's not just about the private use, but it will invite a lot more people into the area. Now we have extra parking and I really hope that the other developers that are doing projects like this actually learn from this. If the parking code is at the bare minimum, that doesn't mean that they have to adhere to it. They can go above the parking code and if they want to have a first-class project, they can add the parking that's required. We're very thankful that this is being done and we fully support the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pejman. Alex McLaren, followed by Lorraine Rogers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Alex McLaren, 7624 East Osborne Road, here to strongly support the project. I think you've heard of the architectural excellence, you've heard of the compromises that were made on the parking. I think people have come together and this is going to be an awesome project. I think the plaza between the Museum of the West and the hotel is going to be stunning and I think someone said that events will be held there. I'm sure they will be. It's going to be a top-notch project. So I'm here to support it. I hope you support all of the actions that are before you. I'd just like to say that with the city's commitment through the bond to the area, to the downtown area, and with this investment by the private sector, as people have said, this is a definite 3P, public-private partnership and I strongly urge you to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaren. Next, Lorraine Rogers, please.
Good evening, Mayor Lane, Vice Mayor Littlefield, and council members. My name is Lorraine Rogers and I live at 19700 North 76th Street in Scottsdale. Over the years, the once vibrant Scottsdale Arts District has become dusty and dull. Recently was brightened by the Museum of the West and by some updates to the streetscape, which is great, but it's simply not enough for the city of Scottsdale to do just a little bit here and there. After all, as we know and we heard tonight, Scottsdale is simply the best. It's simply the best city and Museum Square is just amazing and will totally enhance it and keep it simply the best. Museum Square will create a cohesive, inclusive space with new world-class residences, a hotel and gathering spaces, all of this plus Sagebrush Theater and Grease Paint, the Scottsdale Artist School and the Museum of the West, right in the heart of a revitalized arts district. I'm impressed with the superb public-private partnerships that resulted in parking underground, thank you, and other amenities to benefit both residents and tourists. Clearly, the developers and the architects worked together and they worked with residents and the city staff. Thank you so much for doing all of that and you worked together to create a place that I believe we all can be proud of. Museum Space will bring visitors, residents, new customers, and returning customers to Old Town, along with increased revenues for merchants and for the city. Please consider giving your support on all the items to Museum Square. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Next would be Jay Danic, followed by Steve Palerno.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Thank you. I would like to give my minutes to my daughter to explain tonight because I think she can explain the power of the Arts District a little bit better than I can. So we have been here as a family for 20 years in Scottsdale and we have been going to Stagebrush Theater for the last three to four, so I'd like to let her explain what it means to them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the city council. Hi, I'm Petra. Grease Paint has been like a second home to me. When I first came to Grease Paint, I got welcomed with a big, nice, warm hug that made me smile brighter than the sun in Scottsdale. I know it was the place for me because of the community. The community made me just want to come back. Every time I did a show there, I just couldn't wait to do another show there. As said in Frozen, "Here We Stand," which is when we all gather together and become one big family. But what does this mean to us? Why does Frozen matter to you, you say? Well, because here in Scottsdale, we may be different ethnicities or speak different languages, but we all want similar things. We all want peace, we all want to be loved, and we all want friendship, as they say in The Miraculous Journey of Edward T. Lane. If you have no intention of loving or being loved, then the whole journey is pointless. Well, here at Grease Paint, we show that we all love each other as a community. We all join together, we perform, and it's a bright, loving community. No matter who you are, no matter what ethnicity, no matter what you speak, it doesn't matter. We all join together and we are really good friends and even sometimes better. And it makes you grow as a person and it makes you understand how anyone can feel in different footsteps. Grease Paint benefits us by giving us a community and gives kids like me a passion. Let's seize the day. Vote for the museum square project. Es muy importante y para yo y 800 niños que tener el teatro, que nos da una oportunidad de ser niños y niñas de diferentes culturas en diferentes sitios y nos da una oportunidad de ser unidos. Gracias. Thank you.
Next would be Steve Palerno.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm also going to yield all of my time to some of the younger speakers, including my daughter. Thank you.
Okay. Please keep it at the three minutes though, please.
How's everyone doing today? So nice to see everyone. So I've always loved coming to see shows at Grease Paint and I was lucky enough to be in Frozen this weekend, last weekend. And can I just say, like Grease Paint is such an amazing place to come visit and not to mention like all the other places that you can go and before the show, like it's a great space, you know? And like as a community, we can all come together and just enjoy the space. So and the staff and production team at Grease Paint, they're all in it for the kids and I think like it's a great, great organization and as you can tell by our shirts, we love the museum square project. Thank you. And I'm Nora.
Is that it? Okay. I thought there was more than one. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Next would be Lisa Christian, followed by Maureen Watson.
It's sure tough to follow Petra and Nora, that's for sure. My name is Lisa Christian. I am at 5901 East Caillou Del Paisano and I'm coming here as a 26-year resident of South Scottsdale. Truly, I'm here in support of the project and asking for your support and I'm here to represent these families. So you heard from the kids' side, I'm one of those parents who spends a lot of time at the Stagebrush right now and in the surrounding area. We support this project wholeheartedly and we think it's a great way for Scottsdale to really maximize the assets that you already have from an arts perspective. So please help us, help us maximize what is already there. We families, we spend a lot of time in the area. We come, we eat while our kids are in rehearsals, we shop, we drink, and we want this to be a fabulous, fabulous place for all of our families and to build that community even stronger. So we're here to support and we hope that you'll say yes and help us make this area even more fabulous.
Thank you. Next would be Maureen Watson, followed by Melissa, I believe it's Redlich.
Hi, my name's Maureen Watson, 8219 East Northland. Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. I am here also in support of the museum square project. I have to tell you, I've been at Grease Paint on and off since the early 2000s and I have seen other city councils and other mayors and many other developers and I've never seen a project quite like what Rob McDonald and Swaback have brought to the table. We were never even included in discussions and I know the land is owned by the city, but the building was built with private funds and maintained for 53 years and until Rob McDonald came along, no one had ever come into the theater and said, "Well, let's see what you do here." And so after I met Rob McDonald, I Googled him and I looked at the projects he had built and I was just, we're over the moon that someone can invest in this community because I live in South Scottsdale and I don't really care for North Scottsdale. It's kind of like the hip place to be in South Scottsdale's kind of forgotten, but I love it here and I love Old Town and this project is just stunning and it will bring exactly what they say it will bring to this neighborhood. And of course, on a personal level, the fact that he walked in and said, "Oh no, this theater should stay." I'm an arts guy. He is. I checked. He is an arts guy. And what we do at Stagebrush, we've been there for 53 years. We are the history of that little corner of land and we've had internationally renowned playwrights do works there. We've had Joe Wong was the architect, who was an internationally renowned architect on that building. We've got a kid who will probably be on the Tony stage next year. We've got kids on Broadway, we've got kids in major motion pictures, Once Upon a Time in Hollywood, Shazam, we've got kids in Marvelous Mrs. Maisel and Nancy Drew. They're all coming up through Scottsdale. They're your natives, they're your kids and we should be really proud of what we do there. And I truly believe that with the design by Swaback and Rob McDonald's ability and resources, this will be such a huge win for Scottsdale and such a huge win for the Artist School and Stagebrush and the museum and the city overall. Please, please do vote in favor of this project and thank you, Rob McDonald, and everyone that's involved with this project, John and Susan, and your city staff. Again, I've been through this several times before. The city council, your city developers, and the city planning office have just been wonderful, so kudos to all of you and I can't wait to hear the unanimous vote for yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Christian. Maureen Watson. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Watson. Then Melissa.
Hi, it's Melissa Redleaf.
Is it Redlich?
Yes, Redleaf.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor, council. I'm Dr. Melissa Redleaf. I am a pediatrician and homeowner in Scottsdale. I've been here for 25 years and I am speaking in support of this museum square project and specifically in support of Grease Paint and the Stagebrush. and specifically in support of Grease Paint and the Stagebrush Theater. My daughter grew up taking classes and performing at Grease Paint, and now, and that gave her the foundation to be a successful L.A. actress. And I continue to support Grease Paint and attend a lot of their productions, take dance classes there. And the arts are so important to our youth as well as to our property values and attracting people to our city. Museum Square incorporating Stagebrush and Grease Paint will allow the theater to be a continuous resource for our children and for our community and for entertainment, and I hope that everybody votes in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Redleaf. And next is Savannah Thompson, followed by Nora, her turn, is it Palerno?
(inaudible).
Oh, all right, okay.
My name is Savannah Thompson, and I am an employee at SCP Grease Paint at the Stagebrush Theater. I've lived in Scottsdale almost my whole life, and I'm a supporter of the Museum Square Project. To make a very long story short, discovering Grease Paint in high school changed my life, and I do truly mean that. I not only built lifelong friendships, but I developed a self-confidence that I had never known before, I found my true passion there, and I was exposed to interesting careers that I never knew existed and might never have discovered existed. If it wasn't for Grease Paint, I wouldn't have pursued an arts management degree in theater or even known that I could, and I'm willing to bet that I wouldn't have a job where the work that I do every single day is as rewarding and fulfilling as it is now, especially straight out of college. I'm also willing to bet that I wouldn't have stayed in Scottsdale long after graduation, and I'm here to stay now. The Stagebrush Theater is my home away from home in so many ways, as it has been and will be, for kids all over the Valley. We have kids who drive up to Scottsdale as many as five or six times a week just to do shows here, and I know that their parents stick around, stay in the area, and this is a place that they're familiar with and like to travel to. I firmly believe that the Museum Square will bring a vibrancy to the Arts District that will increase activity in the Arts District, bringing more attention to all of the businesses and all of the venues in this area, which will help ensure that they not only survive, but they thrive, and it will keep us where we are, continuing to give kids and parents the opportunities to discover their home right here in Scottsdale, just like I did. This is why I support Museum Square, and I hope that you vote to support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thompson. Next is Jen Selfridge.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Jen Selfridge. I am a fresh transplant to the Valley. My daughter and I, Gwendolyn, we moved here in July. At the time, we were staying in West Phoenix, and I Googled, "What the heck is there to do in the Valley?" And sure enough, top of the list was this awesome production called Rent at Grease Paint Theater located at Stagebrush Theater. So, my daughter and I, we hiked it to Scottsdale and witnessed our first community theater adventure in the Valley, fell in love with the place. As a result, we ate in town. Next thing I know, my daughter's auditioning for her first show at Grease Paint, and while doing so, I spent way more money than I'd like to admit at all of the shopping locations in Old Town during those three-hour rehearsals. Needless to say, we moved here from the Little Rock area of Arkansas, and do you know what there's not a lot of in Arkansas? A flourishing arts community. It was one of the sole reasons I decided to move west, bring my daughter, who loves theater. Finding Grease Paint has been amazing. It's her home away from home. So, then, when I heard that this little Stagebrush Theater could be in risk of not existing anymore, but then I also hear that there is a developer that not only wants to expand the revitalization of Old Town Scottsdale, bringing parking and, you know, community and hotel, but also preserve the arts that already exist, like, that is a no-brainer. So, I could think of nowhere else I would want to be on a Tuesday evening than supporting Grease Paint, the revitalization of Stagebrush, and the support of the Museum Square Project. So, thank you. And thank you for the warm welcome to the Valley.
Thank you, Ms. Selfridge. Kevin Maxwell, followed by Jennifer Rawwitz, is it? In any case, if she's here.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you again, welcome again, I see you again, and I thank you for my support earlier on my airport commission appointment. I'm going to be really, really brief because every single thing that I wanted to say has already been said, so not much to say. What a great project. The developer has spent a lot of time involving the community, talking to the stakeholders, getting their support, making changes, doing everything you want to do to make this a world-class facility. So, not much to say there on that. Now, also, the other thing I want to mention is when I hear Bob get up and talk about he satisfied the parking, that's pretty much all I need to know, that it's a great project. The other thing I wanted to mention is real quick is tonight, we've heard quotes from different speakers, from Frank Lloyd Wright, Abraham Lincoln, Winston Churchill, and Paul McCartney, and I wanted to add Vince Lombardi's quote to the conversation because I think it applies, and that is, "The only place that success comes before work is in the dictionary." And I know that you've done your work, and congratulations on this future project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. And then Jennifer Rawwitz, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Rawwitz, and I am a City of Scottsdale resident. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, for the opportunity to speak today. For the past nine years, my family and I have been frequent visitors to Museum Square area. We've participated at Grease Paint, at Stagebrush. We've also enjoyed numerous restaurants and art museums, and most recently, the Museum of the West, and we are incredibly excited about this development, not only because it'll bring economic development and growth opportunities to our city, but also because it will bring the City of Scottsdale on par with many metropolitan cities that have vibrant art districts. Almost every major city in the country has a vibrant arts district. And this project, with its proposed renovated streets and additional parking, which you keep hearing about, the luxury hotel, and the four high-end residential buildings will absolutely attract people to the city when they're considering relocating, as my family and I did from D.C. and Miami, or just vacationing, which is how we started here. Additionally, my twin daughters, who you probably won't remember, Mayor, but have had the honor of meeting you on a couple of occasions at Grease Paint, have also had, quite literally, the best opportunity of a lifetime, and that is that they grew up at Grease Paint. For nine years, we have been blessed as a family to have had this incredible experience at a place that welcomed two little girls who did not even speak and are now thriving, on their way to college in two years, and definitely pursuing different theatrical and movie pursuits. And all because Maureen spotted them, and she said to me, "No, your girls need this." And she was right. And with the presence of this project, I know that other kids in this community, although mine are getting older, will have the same wonderful experience and opportunity, and as a mom, that thrills me. So, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, and also, I want to let you know that I think that I speak for many, many, many families when I say we would love to see this project go forward.
Thank you, Ms. Rawwitz. And that does complete public testimony on this item, so I invite Mr. Berry back to the podium and for some wrap-up comments, and then we'll have some questions or comments from the council.
Mayor, Members of the Council, first of all, my thanks to everybody that showed up this evening, and those of you that didn't speak and took the time to come down and support and fill out cards. Thank you all very, very much. Scottsdale's a great city because of great citizens like you all, so thank you. Mayor, Members of the Council, I have nothing to rebut. I just want to remind the Council of some things associated, because oftentimes, you ask developers to demonstrate the community benefit for a proposal. As we've talked about before, the right for additional height and density is not a right in Scottsdale. You have to earn it. It's not a right. You have to demonstrate that a project deserves the ability to add additional height and density to our downtown. What are the community benefits to a project? Small or large or transformational? Mayor, if you'll, and Council, if you indulge me, I'd just like to go through a handful of these. It will energize and revitalize the Arts District. Once again, Arts will become, Scottsdale will become the arts epicenter of the Valley. We've lost a bit of our mojo here in the Valley. This will help return it to the epicenter. We're going to leverage our existing taxpayer investment in the arts. What people haven't talked about is the 1% for the arts in addition to the funds the city's going to receive. That's an additional $3 to $4 million in additional public art for this area. The building footprint is much smaller than what was approved with the existing zoning in place today. It's a 55% reduction in the size of the building footprint over what is approved there today. The open space for Museum Square Plaza, a lot of discussion about the Emerald Necklace of these pocket parks and larger open space areas in our downtown. This achieves one of those key open space objectives. It'll be a great gathering place. Jeff Denzack talked about it being selfie central. I love that. I think it will be. Approximately $27 million of proceeds to be used in the Arts District and Old Town. There will be new public parking. There will be interim public parking. There is uniquely Scottsdale architecture, thanks to the talented group at Swaback Partners. Terms of tourism, the lifeblood of our community keeps our taxes lower. Tourism, four-star luxury hotel, 70,000 room nights a year with the associated bed tax, sales tax, and as my client, Rob McDonald, likes to say when he came to town with sometimes that Canadian, "It'll be the body heat. It's the body heat that's coming to this area. It's going to be incredible." And these, and these tourists are a big part of that body heat for downtown. Sustainability, we've agreed to exceed by 50% the standards of the International Green Construction Code. Enhanced pedestrian connectivity is porous and inviting. It's not walled off. It invites the community in. 60% or more open space, the vast majority of which is open to the public in perpetuity. It anchors the Second Street potential for a museum way anchoring the Scottsdale Stadium, the museum, the Smoka, the Performing Arts Center with the Museum of the West, the Artist School and Stagebrush, a long second. An incredible opportunity to create Museum Way. Less traffic than the existing approval. It generates less traffic than what's already approved on the site today. We're going to have high-income residents who are going to walk to the areas, enjoy the shopping, the amenities, go to Grease Paint with great regularity. This proposal conforms with all city plans and guidelines. And finally, but certainly not least, the estimated construction fees and taxes over the lifetime of this project are almost $8 million, and the estimated annual bed tax and sales tax is over $1 million a year, and currently, as city-owned property, it generates zero zip nada bupkus. Mayor, Members of the Council, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. We also have a team of experts here who can address any questions as well. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Berry. So, I would ask the Council then, if you've got questions of either the staff and/or Mr. Berry or the McDonald team, please, you can speak now or forever hold your peace. If, if there are no comments, oh, I see the reluctant councilman maybe, yes, okay. Councilmember Clapp.
Well, I'd like to lead off with the comment made by the lady from Little Rock, who said, "I can think of nowhere else I would want to be on a Tuesday evening." And as a councilwoman, that really makes me smile because I don't think I've ever heard anybody say that before about a council meeting, so kudos to you. I don't have to say much more about this project, and it's already been listed on the screen and from the, from the people in the audience, and as, as John just stated, which is what was rolling around in my mind, is that this was once known as a premier artist community, but it's kind of lost its luster over the years, and if you read any of the artist magazines today, you don't see Scottsdale mentioned like it was many years ago. So, to me, this project is going to put Scottsdale back on the map as an artist community, and that's, I think, a wonderful thing to happen because it's very, very important to me that this be an artist community, as well as this project will provide so much support to the current artists, the current galleries, the merchants, the surrounding businesses. This is a great project for that part of downtown. So, this is a great project, quality design, you know, great imaginative thought about how to put together a project that can enhance an arts district and can improve upon the Artist School and the Stagebrush Theater and all the other amenities that are in the area, the Museum of the West. I mean, how can you not say enough about a great project, other than, I think it's important that we do recognize the work of this developer and, and the team and their ability to bring a project to Scottsdale, and I'm thankful for that. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve item number 15 and adopt resolution number 11566, ordinance number 4428, resolution number 11600, resolution number 11599, resolution number 11601, and resolution number 11602, after determining that the zoning district map amendment is consistent and conforms with the adopted general plan and finding that the planned block development overlay district criteria have been met.
Second. Oh, did you second it?
Motion's made by Councilwoman Clapp and seconded by Councilwoman Milhavin. She'd like to speak toward it.
Thank you, Mayor. What an historic evening. It's unbelievable that a project of this magnitude comes forward without a single voice in opposition, so this is quite extraordinary. I share the enthusiasm of all the speakers around the impact this is going to have on the arts and culture in our community. Mr. McDonald, you were very gracious earlier in the evening to thank us for our patience. I thank you for your patience, sir. I can't imagine a developer who could have been more patient or more responsive to the concerns of the neighbors and to negotiate with a seven-member board, God help you, sir. Right? Each of us bring our own points of view and our own thoughts and the needs of our own constituents, and can be very challenging to work with a seven-person body, so, sir, thank you very much for your patience, and thank you for choosing Scottsdale. I can't imagine a developer who could build us a better project than we know that you can, sir, so thank you. Also, to Swaback Partners and John Denzack, how exciting to have such a recognized architectural firm build us. We talk about iconic projects and iconic architecture, and that's exactly what we're going to get here, so, so thank you. I am so very excited. As folks may know, before I was on council, I spent 10 years as on the Board of Scottsdale Arts and was their chair for three years, and so I'm very aware of the importance of arts and culture in our community, and, and not just from the Performing Arts Center, but across the community. And thank you, Mr. Brunner, for a little history lesson to really tell us that it's back to our roots, and so I know how important this is to our community, and so excited about what it'll do to revitalize the arts. And to the Stagebrush folks, I'm so excited. It wasn't too many years ago when I helped you over a little bump, there was some question about the lease and whether or not they could stay, and I was so excited to work with you to, to help you stay in the place, and what an exciting day today to take it to the next level, so your future is, is even more assured than it was, so I'm very excited to see you included in this project. I do, though, want to comment a little bit on the politics of this project, and so if, if folks are watching, what we're in short doing tonight is we are selling the city-owned property to McDonald's communities for them to build this project, and we're doing the zoning that makes the project possible. And if you were watching earlier, you saw that we are spending $7 million to build additional parking. We've reduced the sales price, so we're essentially spending $7 million to build parking that not a single parking study supports. The project already overparks itself. All the trends in parking say that as rideshare becomes more and more prevalent, we'll need fewer and fewer parking spaces, but the majority of the council has agreed with their constituents that this parking is necessary. I don't necessarily agree, but I think the, on balance, this project still warrants approval. I'm enthusiastically supportive of it. I would like, however, to remind my colleagues that we are demolishing the offices used by the Museum of the West, and during the conversations and the negotiations, it was proposed that we purchase a nearby office condominium to support the Museum of the West, and folks were extremely concerned about investing our money in supporting the Museum of the West. And so, I would just like to remind our colleagues that while I don't necessarily agree with spending $7 million for parking we don't need, I hope that you would see the light and, and use some of the proceeds of this sale to help support the Museum of the West. and use some of the proceeds of this sale to help support the Museum of the West to replace what's being removed and to assure their continued success. We've heard tonight what an important part they are of this district and hope that you would continue to support them. So I am a very enthusiastic supporter of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Whitehead.
Well, I am also enthusiastically supporting this project. My first presentation was January 2018 as a candidate, and I have, it has been a hard, long, winding road, but this project exemplifies how Scottsdale rolls. It exemplifies what made Scottsdale the world-class community is. And I, there are probably only a handful of developers that have the quality and commitment and staff to do what they have done over the last two years, to produce, to take a cool concept and turn it into what is going to be a world-class project. And to care about this community, put our community over maximizing profits or maximizing speed, the commitment that Rob McDonald and his team have shown just have not gone unnoticed. And I want to thank staff. The City Council has a lot on, we have a lot on our shoulders. The details matter, not just the cool concept. But at the end of the day, our staff is working into the night to make sure that our public is protected and that the, in the details. And so I want to sincerely thank all of our staff for getting us here, and I'm looking forward to voting yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Corte.
Thank you, Mayor. I am and have been all along in total support of this project. And thank you, Mr. McDonald, for your incredible patience. And thank you for bringing together an incredible team, because it is you and the team that have made this happen. So thank you. I just, I see so many benefits to this project, not only to add to our property tax rolls and rental tax base and bed taxes, but also that it's good for our arts district, it's good for our culture of the arts. It's going to be one of those important components of wayfinding as we build this pedestrian path throughout our Old Town to, and to connect with Scottsdale Arts and Smoka, to the Museum of the West, Grease Paint, Stagebrush Theater, and then heading north all the way to South Bridge and soon-to-be South Bridge Two. You know, what good stuff that is, and that only secures the sustainability of our downtown. So thank you for that. I, you know, my vision, we're adding another 350, approximately 350 units, residential units to our downtown and really creating a live and play environment in our downtown. But what's missing is the work, because we don't have Class A office space in downtown. And I'm really hoping that this will, shall we say, jumpstart us into better planning for creating Class A office space so that we can attract those well-paying jobs and so all of the people who live here in Scottsdale can also work here in Scottsdale. And that's what's going to make our Old Town and our downtown, our Old Town sustainable into long beyond 2050 and beyond that. So this masterpiece, as Mr. Swaback states, will be the transformational and important, will be the transformational cog and really is that most important decision to the future of our Scott, of our Scottsdale, our city. So thank all of you for being here. It's amazing, a project of this caliber is 100% approved or 100% supported by everyone in this room, and that just says something for our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Yes, and Vice Mayor of Littlefield.
Thank you, Mayor. I also support this project, and I'd like to thank both the developer and the staff for working basically around the clock for months to create the project that has been put before us. They've worked through all the issues that were voiced by both the staff and by our residents regarding what might have become some of those unintended consequences due to change. They won't happen now. Thank you, Mr. McDonald, for working with us and for creating an area in Scottsdale to become the new Scottsdale's go-to place for our work, live, and play. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's my turn, right? Everybody had to say something, so I'll say something. So, Mr. McDonald, thank you very much. If I was you, I would have pulled out a long time ago. I was for this project from the beginning and then it seemed to be systematically torn apart. And somehow, through staff or you miraculously kept plodding along until you finally got it. But I can tell you, nobody's gotten the downtown merchants and the residents and the City Council and staff to agree with the project. So this is a milestone right here. And honestly, I can't wait for you to build it. It's awesome. I liked it from the beginning. So thank you very much, and I'll be approving it.
Thank you, Councilman. Well, obviously, I'll make it unanimous. I certainly have been a very strong supporter of this project from the beginning, and it has taken a little bit of a harder road than we may be first expected. And frankly, it is also a credit to everybody, the entire team, everyone who is involved with this, with regard to the gallery district, the players on the street, within your team, within the city's staff, and frankly, even input from this council. But in order to come to grips with some of the things that were brought to our attention, and there's not total agreement with some of it, but my feeling is this, as far as the parking is concerned, which seems to be the one significant issue, and that is that we'd hope that we'd have more parking than we need than to end up somehow or other with less. And I think we're looking for tremendous success in this area by virtue of everything that's going on here. So we're hoping that it is, it's there for us all the way around. So we're very, very happy with it. And, Mr. McDonald, thank you very much for your patience as well for me, because I just think it's astounding sometimes when you get in the mix of this. Your patience is, you're blessed with patience.[1604.75][1604.75](Laughter). But in any case, thank you very much for what you've done and what your team has brought to the City of Scottsdale. And we do think of this as a straight-up project. I mean, great players all recognize, but this is simply something that the area has needed for a while. It's funny how things work out. That area has been somewhat, I'd say, certainly a laggard in that southwest portion of the downtown envelope, and it's been for years. I think demonstrated by Mr. Berry's talking about the big zero of what it was actually contributing, because it was just city property was not doing anything in a very valuable area of things. But in the meantime, with the Great Recession, we were able to, and by the vision of great folks in the gallery district who got behind the Museum of the West, and frankly, Michael Fox, and of course, Jim Brunner, and the entire crew, and the gallery owners, who knew that that would be an element, that would be an attraction to bring in for our entire gallery district. It started out as one element, and I think as Councilwoman Millhaven mentioned too, the idea that we were, it was touch and go as to whether or not we were going to have Grease Paint and Sagebrush stay there. At one point, it was condemned. So, I mean, it was ready to go another way altogether. Now we reinvested in it at that time, of course, the museum with tourism dollars in large part, and another investment. Strong componentry that comes together. Even the Scottsdale School of Art at a point in time had a struggling time. This is going through the Great Recession, of course, among other things. So it certainly, it all came together, and I think now with this project, which we're about to approve, and we're hoping very strongly that it gets into motion and does the things that we have been demonstrated here it can do. So that's, it's funny how things work. I think if I were to quote anyone else, it'd be Kevin Maxwell's talk about, "It's almost worth the price of admission to have Bob Pejman be on board and be happy about it." So, I mean, that's a cure unto itself. And Bob, if you're still here, I mean, I hope you understand that.[1748.25][1748.25](Laughter). But in any case, thanks again for what you've done, and frankly, thank you for the staff and all the time that was spent in bringing us to this point. And I think from what I hear here, we have a unanimous vote on this coming. We will officially make it right now.[1765.62][1765.62](Applause). Yeah, we do have the vote. And we do have a motion and a second. So all those in favor, please indicate behind and register your vote. It's unanimous as advertised, so. Very good. Thank you to everybody. Thank you to everybody who contributed by thought and by actions in bringing this together. So thank you again. Thank you.